Right, up. Right face. Present arms.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Aye.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order arms. Left face. Present arms. Order arms. Left face.
Well, that was way better than usual. Here, here. I always forget those first few words right at the beginning, so.
Okay, Ms. Lee.
Present.
Dr. Phob.
Present.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Or Matias here. Pastor Moody.
Present.
Dr. Randalls.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
President Baker.
Here. We're all here. Is this? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the added staff members that are in front of us? Dr. Phob.
So moved?
Support.
Support. Okay. Everybody supports, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. The agenda is passed. All right, we have several celebrations here today. So, we actually have two new members to our board here, two student representatives, Abigail and Christian. And can we start with Christian and have you introduce yourself and where you're from?
My name is Christian McDaniel and I'm originally from Florida and I've traveled around many places because my dad was in the military and I'm very thankful to have this opportunity. Thank you.
What high school do you go to?
I go to Ottawa Hills High School.
And Abigail?
My name is Abigail Schoffel. I am a senior at City High School. I have lived in Grand Rapids all of my life and I just love being involved in the community, so I'm really grateful to have this opportunity.
Well, it's great to have you guys here and so we do count on you coming here prepared to tell us what the perspective is of your student body, so definitely happy to be here. All right. We're going to celebrate Union High's ROTC.
We are, actually. I would ask Ron Gorman to come forward, please.
So that's, that's your salvation.
Good evening. Superintendent Weather O'Neill, President Baker, distinguished members of the board. Before we begin with our ROTC, Junior ROTC Celebration, I'd like to just give a little bit of background on our student representatives this evening. We interviewed 21 candidates, all based on principals' recommendations for these positions, and we have two shining stars who will be sitting on our Board of Education this year. They were, they didn't share a lot, so let me share just a little bit about them. Abby Schoffel is a senior at City High School, enrolled in the IB Diploma Program. She is very engaged within the community. She is an active leader on the Grand Rapids Mayor's Youth Council, as well as a hard-working intern for David Legrand's State House Campaign. She has aspirations to enter the realm of politics and as such has spent the past summer taking a class on the Israeli-Palestinian conflict at Cornell University. Abby has recently been awarded a Full Room and Board Scholarship at the University of Michigan on grounds of her acceptance. Abby has a 4.1 grade point average. Next up is Christian McDaniel. He is a senior at Ottawa Hills High School. He is very involved in extracurricular activities. Christian plays on the football team, the basketball team, and the track team. The son of an Air Force airmen, Christian has lived in many states as well as overseas. Next fall, Christian plans to study Electrical Engineering at Michigan State University. Christian has a 4.0 grade point average. As you can see, both are very qualified for these positions.
You're welcome.
At this time, we would also like to recognize a large group of individuals. These are the individuals we call on when we have lots of activities that go on in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, when we want to ensure that things go really smoothly. Tonight, we are here with Mr. Carl Nelson. So, Mr. Carl Nelson, could you please join me? And Major Robert Ware. I'll slide over one for him. They're going to share with us a little bit about Union's Junior ROTC Team. We also have Junior ROTC at Innovation Central High School, as well as Ottawa Hills High School, but this evening, we are recognizing the hard work and many celebrations from the Union High School Junior ROTC. Mr. Nelson.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of the Union High School GROTC. The Union High School GROTC, under the direction of Major Robert Ware and First Sergeant Ron Voisinette, continues to be a beacon of pride in our community. They have accommodated many requests to visit elementary schools, parades, they have been escorts and greeters at many parents' nights and school activities, and still beat me to the school at 6:30 for PT. Their commitment and responsibility to the community, their school, their families, and themselves are model characteristics for all students. We are proud to have this program and opportunity to share these young people with you tonight. Major Ware has prepared the highlights and a brief outline of the Union High School GROTC celebrations.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I'd like to take this time right now to thank the cadets for participating. Zachary Workman, Mushwa Abdi, Grace Trahio, Jaden Horner, Juan Laredo, and Augustine Cruz. I'd like to thank the school board for giving us the opportunity to post the colors for tonight's meeting and allowing us the opportunity to highlight the Junior ROTC program at Union High School. The program currently has 112 students, spread throughout five hours. 69 are male and 43 are female. What I'd like to highlight is the four extracurricular teams that we have. We have the drill team, the color guard, the raider team, which is the physical fitness team, and an air rifle marksmanship team. In the past 12 months, the cadets have participated in two regional drill competitions, placing first and third in one of them, and placing first overall in citywide competition. The raider team has participated in two regional competitions, taking third place in one of them. We have had 14 color guard missions for various local civic organizations. In addition, the program has over 500 volunteer hours for high school and middle school activities, and we're on track to repeat those accomplishments for the upcoming 12 months. In making students' career and college ready, high school students that have three years of Junior ROTC and they choose to enter the military upon graduation, their first year's paycheck is $2,200 bigger than those students that have not had Junior ROTC and choose to enter the military upon graduation. I have 12 seniors in the program this year and seven have chosen to enter the military, giving each of them approximately $53,000 towards a college education. I have two seniors that have chosen the Marines, three for the Army, and two for the Navy. Thank you for your time.
Nice, nice.
To the Community Transition Center.
I would ask Ms. Laura Lamore to come forward, please.
Good evening, Superintendent Weather O'Neill, President Baker, and board. It is my esteemed pleasure to sit in front of you as the Executive Director for Special Education and present to you two of the students who are going to tell you their experience about participation and learning in an empowerment model through the Community Transition Campus. The Community Transition Campus is a little bit new to the naming conventions that we're used to in Grand Rapids. Previously, it was known as the Transition Center at Mayfield. And already, I'm forgetting what that is because we practice being a Community Transition Campus, and they're here today to speak with you about that. So I don't take up their time. I'd like to introduce the administrator of that program, Mrs. Deb Mikeley, who is going to then introduce you to one of our community coaches/teachers, and two young men who have come to tell you their story in their own words. Deb?
Good evening. Thank you very much for letting us all come as representatives of Community Transition Campus and use our voices in a positive and informative manner, and that is really what we're all about with the empowerment model. It's empowering young people to realize their vision for their lives and to grow in skills towards independence and using those, you know, self-determination skills to use outside of our program and what we do, not just with us and the boundaries within the program. And these two young men are kind of our poster, poster young adults for this empowerment model. Both Nick White and Tanis Hooker have come tonight to share with you, each in their own individual ways, what the empowerment model has meant to them and the growth they have made in it, and along with their coach, teacher Bethany, one of the staff at Community Transition Campus, they, in their own way, will share that with you. Nick is going to begin with just a short presentation that he made himself, and Tanis and Bethany will follow with a brief conversation to share information with you. So, thank you.
We're going to step out of the way so they can have the front row.
Nope.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Nicholas White and I am here to talk about the empowerment model. I have a voice. I have used my voice in the past and I will continue to use my voice as the future progresses. The empowerment model has given me the opportunity to do things, quite frankly, I would never thought was possible. I've gone from being stuck at home under my mom's ball and chain, and I've gone from that to not only riding the city bus during school hours, but taking the city bus in personal time. I sat down with Bethany here and a couple other staff members. We looked at the bus book, we did a couple trial runs, and two weeks later, city bus master. Another thing that the empowerment model has helped me achieve was learning how to cook. I've gone from using the microwave and toaster oven to using stove top and oven items such as mashed potatoes, stuffing, et cetera, et cetera. Excuse me. I have accomplished both those feats by the one key thing that this program has shaped, designed, and molded on its advocacy. I advocated my need to ride the city bus. I advocated the need to cook. And had I not done that, I'd be a sovereign man sitting at home eating ramen noodles. I want to close by saying that I can't take all the credit to myself. I want to thank Bethany and various other staff members for helping me get to where I am at this point in my career. And again, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak around you guys, and I look forward to more challenges to present myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Tanis wanted to take a little different approach where I'll ask him questions and then he'll answer questions. He likes to be like interviewed, like, you know, sports-like. He's quite a sports fan.
He's a quite a sports fan.
So, Tanis, you know, he talked about the, Nick talked about the empowerment model. What does the empowerment model mean to you?
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The empowerment model means to me is that I'm able to do things on my own, such as cooking, learning how to clean, basic cleaning such as vacuuming, and being able to, one day hopefully, live on my own.
So, that's what brings me to, is that your vision?
Yes, it is. My vision is to live on my own, yes.
All right, so we have our individual learning plans and you selected three priorities to focus on. What are those three priorities?
Yes, three priorities are cooking, cleaning, and volunteer opportunities.
All right, so how do those support your vision?
Well, because hopefully, one day, if I master these goals, well, one, it gets me out in the community, two, I want to be able to cook, you know, and be able to eat, and three, I want to be able to clean and, you know, basic cleaning for independence.
So, do you feel like you're going to be doing this all on your own with no help whatsoever?
Absolutely not. That is not the approach I'm taking. I'm taking that I'll be independent, but I'll still be able to get help if I need it.
Have you had to seek any help to help you towards your vision so far?
Yes, I have a CLS worker who is great, and she's been helping me, actually taking me to my volunteer opportunities and helping me clean.
Okay, so we'll just wrap this up. We're out of time.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. One more celebration, the American Achievers Educator Voice Fellowship.
Superintendent Neal, President Baker, members of the board, I'm very pleased to be here tonight with two, only two, members of the 50 fellows that are part of the America Achievers Educator Voice Fellowship. So, we're honored with two representatives tonight, and I'm going to introduce them to you. To my left is Carolyn Bolduc from Sherwood Park, and a little further from my right, rather, is Kathy Thompson from Harrison Park. And they're going to introduce to you the program and sort of their participation in it.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Good evening, everybody. The Michigan Educator Voice Fellowship began in the fall of 2014 and is a branch of the American Achieves Teacher and Principal Fellowship. It provides teachers with leadership opportunities in order to support and showcase the wonderful things that are happening in our schools. My passion is using technology to support differentiation in the classroom and to teach other educators how they can begin to use technology in the classroom as well. The fellowship provides me with opportunities to collaborate with other educators, present at conferences, and bring back what I have learned to our district. I've been co-teaching a class through GRPS University since last year with Heather Laparrell, our instructional technologist, and Heather Gauck, who's over there, who is also a fellow at Harrison Park. I'm so excited to be part of a team that celebrates the wonderful things that are happening in our school. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy, and I am very honored to be part of this group. One of the things that I was really looking forward to was the opportunity to be able to work with legislators as they influence educational policy in Lansing. So, being able to learn how to do that is something that I am really anxious to continue to do, and it's actually spurred me on to start my own blog. This last year, I have really been studying how social-emotional intelligence impacts academic intelligence, so that's been my focus, as well as working with Heather with technology, because the engagement also, noticing from my studies, is really helping impact that social-emotional intelligence. So, I really am honored to be able to work with this group and to continue to learn and grow along with my employment with Grand Rapids Public Schools.
And I think absolutely, the most exciting part is that they become the face of the district as they work through these opportunities and they're out speaking with others. They're helping to change perceptions that may or may not exist and helping to put a really positive face on the district, so I couldn't be more proud of them. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While next on the agenda is report of the student representatives, do you guys have
any reports to share?
Well, I just want to thank you all for letting us be here, and I'm looking forward to this year and being able to contribute and just serve as a representative as a student body. I guess, just going off of recent events, I'm just really excited about the bond proposal and that that passed. That's what I'm most excited about for current events and also that I'm here, so thank you all.
I would also like to say that I'm very excited to be here again and that in the future, I would like to be able to bring up more things to this meeting and explain things more, better.
All right. Thanks a lot, Christian. All right, public comment for board agenda items, and there were cards in the back. I don't know if any, did anybody turn in a card? Anybody wanting to turn in a card? Okay, so this is for board agenda items, we'll have another one later. All right, next is secretary's report.
All right. GRPS Annual Turkey Trot 2015. Joined over 2,000 runners in a 23rd annual Thanksgiving Day Parade, I'm sorry, run for Grand Rapids Public Schools.
It'll be like a parade.
The purpose of the event is to engage the entire community in a higher level of awareness around physical fitness, movement, and nutrition. Proceeds from this event goes to support the athletic programs in the school district. There will be free mini trot for kids age 12 and under, and there will be a finisher prize for the mini trot and medals for the top three-place finishers for each age division in the 5K race. So, it's November 26th from 8 for a mini trot race for kids, will take place after the Turkey Trot approximately 8:40 a.m., where the Van Andel Arena, 140 Fulton, West Grand Rapids. And of course, registration is www.grps.org, select athletics to the tab on the homepage. And then, of course, special board meeting retreat. The GRPS Board will hold a special board meeting retreat at GRPS University Monday, November 23rd, starting at 8:30 till 4 o'clock PM. And then, of course, the Salvation Army Angel Tree Donation Site, the Grand Rapids Public School, practice campus is participating in the Salvation Army's Angel Tree Toy Drive. Please select a tag or two and purchase a toy for the drive. Please bring them and the items to the front desk receptionist during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, from 7:30 to 4:30. The toy should be unwrapped with a tag. Toy and gifts cards will be delivered to the Salvation Army drop-off site to be distributed to families in need this year. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Turkey Trot here, Dr. Ron is into his fourth day of training, so any other staff planning on joining him? Sorry, Ron. All right, superintendent's report.
I'd like for John Hemholt to come forward, Dr. Baker, and members of the board.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, President Baker, members of the board. Superintendent asked me to come and give a quick update on the outcome of the bond election. We won.
That's a good thing.
We've been waiting.
So, just a quick analysis, it was a 53% to 47%. There were 10,183 yes votes and 9,093 no votes, so about 1,100 vote margin, which is a pretty big margin, certainly by votes. By percentage, it was a little closer than maybe we anticipated, but still, that was a big win. The third ward, we won every single precinct except for one by a margin of 1,222. We won the second ward by 493 and we lost the first ward by 622. There was a good map, the MLive, I know Monica Scott, who couldn't be here tonight, she had a great little map that showed the precincts, so we're certainly able to provide you with that precinct-level data now. The thank you letters are going out, and I know that members of our team are preparing information to share how this will be, how the bonds will be let, how the projects will be timed lined and rolled out.
I want to say thank you to all the people probably in this room and certainly in the city that walked and knocked for months to get this passed. It was really, you know, it felt great to be part of it and to have so many in the city supporting it, so thanks for all those that did that work. All right, is that it?
That is it for me.
Okay, action items. We have a few here. We do have back on our agenda once more, student reinstatement. Superintendent Neal, if you can explain that one? Well, actually, can we get a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approve.
Support.
Support.
We, there's a problem in terms of writing, and I don't know when we discussed this. Page 62 of our packet, "It is therefore the recommendation of the committee that the student be conditionally reinstated to his neighborhood school without conditions."
This is?
The reinstatement. 60, page 62 of our packet.
If I can address that, Dr. Randalls, if it says "without conditions," that is because the student would have already met all of the conditions from before.
So then, what would be the conditionally reinstated?
For this particular student, it is, it was on the agenda once before, but the student is a client of one of the board members, and so.
I think Ms., Dr. Randalls was just suggesting some word proofing, wordsmithing, that maybe the word "conditionally" needs to be taken out on page 62 in that sentence, the first sentence. One of the two words needs to come out logically. It can't be conditionally and unconditionally.
Yeah. I don't have the same packet that you have.
It's the last sentence on that page.
The one I have is, doesn't have that.
Oh, mine does.
Mine does.
Yeah. I logged in and got that. Okay. You know, because what happened is, and maybe that's part of the issue, for a while, the website wasn't working, we got the packet, but we only got the public packet. I logged in earlier this weekend, well, earlier this weekend, obviously this weekend, and got this downloaded.
So, we've actually already voted on this a couple times, and Superintendent Neal has to explain why we're voting on it again, so.
So, for this particular reinstatement, it was included two weeks ago and should have been pulled as an action item instead of a part of the consent agenda, and so it's, this particular one comes up again as a single action item to vote for the student to be reinstated, and the student did meet all of our conditions.
And as previously discussed, I have to abstain because this is a client line.
Just a question, is it being recommended this student be returned to Riverside Middle?
It is, yes, the same school. That is correct.
So, this, again, the reason we're reconsidering this is because we voted once before, errantly, Dr. Legrand ended up voting, and we need to reconsider it.
I'm not sure that's what happened. I thought it was that it was part of the consent agenda and it should have been pulled as an action item. I did in fact abstain, but it should have been properly done as a standalone action item.
That is correct, David.
All right. Okay, so, Tia, can you call it? Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Phob?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Mr. Legrand?
Abstain.
Or Matias? Yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes. Next, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Secretary reading, policy 7175.
Support.
Thank you. We did review this last week. Any questions regarding this particular policy changes that was in regards to state law changes? No discussion? All right.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Felb?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Matias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randall's?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Just wanted to make a comment about that, having reviewed it. It's, it's a very robust and impressive parent engagement plan that the district has and made even more robust by the state changes. And I'm assuming part of the policy is that there's board review and assessment of the parent, of the implementation of the parent engagement plan. So I'm assuming that happens in academic achievement every year, but I just want to make note of it to make sure that we are in compliance with our own policy on that.
Pastor Moody, you took a note on that?
Yes, sir, I did.
Good, good. All right, next is the authorization certificate for commercial card. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Support.
Superintendent Noel, can you explain if there's any question?
Yes, so President Baker and members of the board, this particular commercial card is to authorize certain people in the district to purchase materials that may be needed, and there are four, there will be four signatures on the card. Larry Oberst, Larry Johnson, Ken Clamparence, and myself. So we will be authorizers to sign for any purchases that we may need for the bond.
Okay. Call the roll.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Felb?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randall's?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Please have it.
All right, motion for the reimbursement resolution.
Motion to approve reimbursement resolution.
Support.
Discussion or questions regarding that? All right.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Felb?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randall's?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Please have it.
All right, next item is the approval of grant application for the super school project.
Move for approval?
Support.
Can you tell us?
President Baker, members of the board, this particular grant application came up for a, could be for a new project, but for us, we are asking for the museum school. We meet all the qualifications and would like your approval to move forward. It is in line with your policy that we ask for permission because it's such a large grant. It is up to $10 million, and we would like to go forward, so we need your permission to apply.
Just point of information, so, so maybe so the audience understands, who's putting up the money for this? Is this, this isn't Elon Musk, is it? It's got the X number on it, and it's $10 million. We're not proposing to put the, we're not proposing to put the high school into orbit or anything, right?
Hopefully not.
Did you have a-
We might for $10 million.
Space, space or the planetarium, though.
You don't know offhand where the-
I don't know, yes.
Okay, just curious.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Exciting.
I think it's a, sorry, go ahead. I think it's a good idea to apply for a grant since it's going to be a costly item to adequately take care, furnish that and get all the things that we need, so good luck to us.
Yeah, I guess I just want to applaud the ambition of applying for the grant. I think the school is pretty special. I think it deserves national attention and a national level grant, so woo-hoo.
That would be amazing.
Great.
All right, call the roll.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Felb?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randall's?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Please have it.
And motion for the approval of purchasing agenda.
So moved.
Support.
All right, any discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Felb?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randall's?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Okay, please have it.
All right, the next item is the consent agenda grouping. Motion to support.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
Support.
Oh, Dr. Flores?
Just one little item, and I don't, it's under recommendations on page, recommendation starts on 25, goes to 26, it's really on 26, under Burton Elementary and Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Academy. It kind of sounds like it says it has been recommended that the Schools of Hope Program staff, and it kind of stops there. I'm wondering what the recommendation is and, you know, if that doesn't need to be corrected or-
The third bullet?
It's the fourth bullet technically, but the third, third on page 25, 26, yes.
Yeah, under rec, okay. This is review.
Yeah.
It just, the sentence just kind of falls off.
Right, so what was the recommendation?
Is this the-
It was from the Academic Achievement Committee, minutes, meeting minutes, yeah.
Obviously need to be corrected. Yeah, we'll probably just have to go back to the recording and make the appropriate edit. Good catch, though.
So should we pull these minutes and reconsider them at the next?
Probably.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus?
Mo made the motion.
Huh?
No, Ms. Slade made the motion.
Okay.
What was the motion, I'm sorry?
To, for the consent agenda minus the Academic Achievement Committee meeting minutes.
Sure, agree with that, Mo.
Pardon?
You made the motion, do you agree with-
Yes.
And did I, did we get a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All right, call the roll.
Okay, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Felb?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Legrand?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randall's?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Discussion items, we have none. Public comment for agenda and/or non-agenda items.
I was just reminded-
I'm tired of correcting it.
Of my accent.
It's Bowens. Marjorie, right?
It's Bowens, it's Bowens. It's really easy.
They really want their names, right? Just like Matias and Gonzalez, correct? Yes.
Could you state your name for the record?
I'm Mary Bowens, President of GREA, and I wanted to come up and wish you a happy American Education Week for 2015. This week spotlights the importance of a quality public education and honors the individuals who make a difference in ensuring that every child receives a quality public education. Monday is the kickoff day, and tomorrow on Tuesday highlights parents, inviting parents for a firsthand look at a typical day in the school for their children. Wednesday is the Education Support Professionals Day that recognizes people who meet the needs of the whole child. Thursday, I think you might like, is Educator for a Day, where elected officials and community leaders are encouraged to serve as educators for a day and spend a day in a public school. And then Friday, we honor the substitute teachers.
Some, thank you very much. No other public comment?
I do not.
All right, superintendent comments?
No comment.
All right, board member comments, I'm going to start, Dr. Flores today.
Well, thank you. I guess I'd like to underscore the, the need and the invitation for, for our elected officials and board members and members of the community to come out and actually partake in, in that challenge, to go into the classroom and, and help out for a day. I think it'd be a real awakening.
Yeah, thanks.
Two, one fairly lighthearted, and that is that you're talking about the Turkey Trot made me realize that I may as well announce now that I intend to swim the Straits of Mackinaw on next Labor Day. And I have, and I have to, I have to raise money for it, for, through have, it's a fundraiser for Habitat for Humanity, so you're all officially unnoticed, I'm going to be hitting you up for money. That way I can say I swam across Lake Michigan, which is good, right?
How much money do you need?
Anyway, so I'm going to swim the Straits, which means I can say I swam across Lake Michigan, which would be nice to be able to say. The second and more, and more serious, well, that's, that'll be serious for me. But the second thing I wanted to update the board on a little bit and the public, and at the risk of stealing superintendent's fire at a, or thunder at a later date, Natasha Neal came to my, the board that I am, another board I'm on, which is Restorative Justice Board, and gave us an exciting update about what's going on in the schools. And the Restorative Justice stuff that we have all supported is sort of growing organically. So it's not just now in the pilot schools, but it's being adopted and implemented in a lot of schools. It's sort of growing out because as people figure out that this is a good thing, they're grabbing a hold of it. I know that Superintendent Neal just sent out a whole raft of other people get trained to be trainers, which is going to give us the capacity to expand this, really expand it district-wide. But the exciting news that I heard from Natasha Neal was that we are, preliminary indications are, we have dropped our suspension rate district-wide, something like 25%, which is not only Restorative Justice, but that's amazing. I mean, that's, that's a taste of where I think we need to be. I mean, I think the promised land here is that suspensions and expulsions drop to as close to zero as we can get them. I mean, if someone gets out of the school because the justice system gets them, that's one thing, but I think our goal should be that if our kids can be in school, they should, and, and we should be driving that number down to zero as aggressively as we can. So it's amazing to have, to have their suspension number down 25%. I think that's an incredible victory that we all should be really proud of, because we all know kids can't learn if they're not in school, and, and it puts them at risk, it puts them at risk of, of getting down the wrong path, and I think the most important service we can give to our children is to keep them aligned with possible future successes, and, and keeping them in school is, there's, there's no way to, there's no path that gets us there that doesn't involve the kids being in the classrooms.
Thanks, Mrs. Graham. Pastor Moody?
No, no comment.
Dr. Randall's?
No comment. I would, I want to thank you very much for the lead on Restorative Justice. I think that's really wonderful because you're exactly right, those kids don't learn a thing when they're out of school. It reinforces negative stuff, and my heart's with the teachers who have to endure, but I think this makes it better for them when they stay in school and the teachers can assist them, because they're the ones who are face-to-face with it. So, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, just want to thank again, Unions ROTC. I don't think we realize over 100 kids that participate in that and are getting a positive experience of that. Just to toot my own horn, my daughter came out of Unions ROTC, and as a result of that, got a commission and was able to go into Army Aviation and become a Black Hawk pilot. So I think our kids are learning not just that kind of discipline, but the opportunities that will afford them as a result, so, so thanks so much. And again, want to, want to thank those for, who voted for the bond. Very powerful indication that, that our city believes in our children, and, and again, we're going to give them the facilities and technology to be ahead of the game, and that's what we need. We need to be ahead of the game, so thank you.
Well, I just, we had a very, we had a very heavy agenda at the Legislative Committee this morning. It was really good, strong discussion. I encourage the rest of the board to watch the tape, look at the agenda, stay informed, ask any member of the committee or Mr. Hemholt questions they might have. There's a lot going on. And I don't want to steal Dr. Baker's thunder, but I actually didn't attend because I was sick, but I wanted to give a shout-out to the City High Musical. I just heard roars of compliments about how powerful and how great it was, and I know Dr. Baker's daughter was in it. There was a very promising young violinist playing the pit that I know, but it was a great event and just wanted to celebrate our district and their wonderful accomplishment with that musical.
Thank you. Mr. Ross?
No, no particular comment, just welcome to Christian and Abigail. Looking forward to get to know you guys and hear your perspective and, you know, just trying to be a help to you. So thanks for being on board.
Would either of you like to make a comment?
Christian's like, I didn't come prepared for three times, but you're welcome to comment. But you don't have to.
But Abigail's ready, though.
I just want to say thank you again, yes. And the musical was great, I saw it during school, it was fantastic, and your daughter did a very good job, Mr. Baker, very much.
That's Dr. Baker.
Dr. Baker, excuse me.
So yes, I was, Ron was there also on, last week, and so we were talking about how great it's just, people that saw the play, it's just really incredible, the talent that we have in this district was just really remarkable, and people, I can't imagine a high school production being any better, or any, many productions at all. And I also want to thank again the community for supporting the bond. I mean, we, we have this motto that we are GR, and, and I think that GR embraced GRPS as, as their, so it's, it was really fantastic, turned out, so I want to appreciate everybody for supporting the bond and supporting the community. It's, it's amazing how many people have congratulated and almost, you know, everybody starts out with superintendent has done a great job, the board's doing a great job, and staff's doing a great job in the district. And I mean, it's just across the board, I hear that constantly, and that, you know, we have, like, we've worked to create a transformation in the social infrastructure, and now we have a chance to really build the physical infrastructure to give that social infrastructure what we really need, so fantastic, and thank you. With that, meeting is adjourned.